Thank you for the warning. Anybody? Anyways.
Okay, we'll call the April seventh meeting. We're here to support the police rights. I have kind of like the place of religion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its own accord indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
No.
Proclaim.
Councilmember Alexander, here. Councilmember Brandon, here. Councilmember Brinker.
Here.
Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Morsort, here. Councilmember Stevenson.
Here.
Mayor Law.
Here.
Proclaim the minutes of the March third special meeting and March seventeenth. Thank you very much.
How will approval would be had if you said that the March seventeenth would actually expedite in March third? On the question? Yes.
Some voting, by a second.
What's that?
Questions, comments, and votes.
Call for them.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker.
Yeah.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Morsort, yes. Councilmember Stevenson, there along.
Good.
Holy Collins requests. I'm with residents and city tax day.
Anticipate Vince is going to be here, but since he is, I have copies of my bars. You got an easier way to get out.
Counsel?
Yeah. I'm Rich Marson Kabbage. I'm on the Waterfield Foundation Authority and the administrator of the City Authority, and I have attended all the meetings of the Water Committee except the May twenty-third, nineteen, twenty, twenty-fourth. I wanted to address some comments that were made at the last council meeting about the day of water authority. I prepared a timeline. If you read the news articles or listen to the discussion at the March seventeen council meeting about combining the two water systems, you get the impression that suburban water authority has asked to form a joint authority and participated in discussions related to that. Allowed the city to infer large legal costs to develop a proposed path and decided one hundred percent to pin county law for budget authority. It allowed a discussion on the joint authority concept that stands will be covered there. This is not true. The current discussion of combining the two systems was initiated by the city manager in an email dated August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three to click maze office manager of the suburban authority, asking for the current number of customers by each municipality suburban service and total volume built by the municipality and the urban service for the year twenty-two. Maze provided the information and asked why Wilson needed the information. The response was, I was curious what an actual joint municipal authority would look like based on a combination of the average of both flow and users for each municipality than both suburban and the city serve. After the discussion with the suburban board, Maze responded that he believed the suburban board was open to the possibility of such a joint authority. Subsequently, a committee was formed of the four entities involved, suburban, the city, filtration authority, and Lock Haven City Authority. At a meeting of March sixth, twenty twenty-four, the committee discussed that each entity should commit to transferring its assets and liabilities to a new joint authority for the sum of one dollar and request that each of the four parties agree to that in writing. A letter of April second, twenty twenty-four, the city manager stated that counsel adopted the recommendation of the subcommittee agreeing that of terms can be reached that are agreeable to the city in the formation of a joint municipal authority. Combining all governmental entities into one water authority, the city would agree to turn over its approximately one point eight million dollar in access to the new joint authority for adoption. Meeting meetings continued until May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. This meeting, it was discussed that the next step should be the preparation of a memorandum of understanding between the four entities. It was agreed that Jennifer Karen would prepare a draft memorandum. Paul Ryan and Frank Maselli would review the document. By satisfactory review, the document would be forwarded to the subcommittee. Recognizance of the city that spoke to Edgar Siemens and approved preparation of the document by Jennifer Karen. Based on the minutes of that meeting, there was no indication that the city was considering anything different from a joint authority in which all parties turned over their assets to the new authority. Nothing was heard about a different proposal until September twentieth, twenty, the paper was split into for suburban, filtration authority, and the city authority received by email from Jennifer Karen of the city's Pittsburgh law firm. A document described as a summary recap later in connection with the proposed plan, the region-wide water service in Rock Haven area. We'd be happy to set up a meeting to discuss your thoughts on the proposed review that provides a framework for the MOU to be entered into by the parties. That document was totally different from any option discussed previously and was apparently developed in private without any input from the other parties involved. That Karen document was forwarded by the filtration authority to each of the other parties, and this was deferred notice that the city was considering an option different from the formation of a new authority. However, between the last committee meeting and September email from Jennifer Karen, there were several opportunities for the city to disclose its desired path. On June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, the filtration authority hosted a meeting and invited the representative from its engineering firm, HRG, who made a presentation on a feasibility study on options for combining the water systems, looking into benefits, advantages, and disadvantages. Manager Wilson and council members Morsort and Conklin attended, but there is no disclosure from anyone that the city was developing its own proposal. At the filtration authority meeting of August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, an email was received from manager Wilson stating that a city council has tentatively agreed to his passport included in the MOU after its next council meeting on September ninth, the council votes affirmatively lead to another path forward. Those steps will be written up by the city's attorneys at Edgar Siemens and then forwarded to suburbans, Paul Ryan, and the CCCWFA's Frank Maselli. Hopefully, the three attorneys can come to consensus on the draft, and it will be available to our all parties in September in their consideration of entering into the MOU. At the council meeting on September nine, twenty twenty-four, suburban's officer manager Maze asked about the memory on the understanding, and according to the minutes was told that the MOU will be provided to solicitors for review. Again, there was no mention of any different proposal. At the following meeting of the filtration authority on September twenty-fifth, a potential feasibility study would be discussed, and the board agreed to request a price quote. Also, at that meeting, an email was received from manager Wilson stating that the Karen document she had already forwarded was a city's framework, not a combined MOU, which cannot be produced until suburban and the CCCWFA provide their input on their respective paths forward, at which time consensus can ultimately produce a formal MOU. Even on the state, the council had already taken the first step of their path with a resolution initiating the takeover of the water asset from the city authority. The express article mentioned that council had a lengthy executive section with the attorneys and went through the whole business discussing the water company, the water system, the list, and that you decided what you wanted to do. That's precisely the problem. Discussion was in private. There was no open discussion with the other past parties about the new path forward. Mr. Wilson complained about the legal costs incurred, but if there had been open discussion with the other parties before engaging attorneys, the opinions of the other parties would have been known, and unnecessary legal costs could have been avoided. Based on the comments at the last joint committee meeting on May twenty-fourth, the city already had Edgar Siemens working on their plan well before there was any issue raised by the other parties or the information provided by the city. This is not the first time combining the systems has been considered. There have been at least two prior efforts, and each time discussions fell apart because one party or the other felt that they were being taken advantage of or giving more assets than the other party. I'm afraid, but once again, at that point, you're afraid of giving up control of your assets. While the city and or the city authority have substantial assets, they also have substantial liabilities. The city has the permit of the dams, is responsible for an estimated thirty-five million dollars worth of necessary improvements meet current DEP regulations. In addition, the city's engineering firm identified forty point million dollars in need in system improvements to best to address higher protection, storage, and main replacement. The city would be responsible for these costs, whether the suburban authority was involved or not. The positive aspect of the situation is that you have a partner in the suburban authority, which by the terms of the caution agreement would be responsible at a forty or two or forty to fifty percent of shared cost based on usage. The shared cost would be the dams of thirty five million dollars and approximately sixteen million dollars of the system improvements are approximately fifty-one million dollars in total. The suburban authorities already contribute them some one point three million dollars in net service payments, but the oil spillway and subsequent well and dam projects through filtration authority buildings. Twice before, I'd encourage basis to face discussion between all parties before you ask for commitments. And once again, making that suggestion. And if the driving force is really the desire to get away from PUC regulation, which was mentioned, meaning perhaps should considerations should be given to one of the original ideas to leave the assets for the city authority, make it an operating authority and contact with the city to operate.
Anytime. Okay, anyone else? Comments from residents and city tax?
Hey. Hey. Mainly about the letter that I had sent to you, and if there was, I think there might have been some misunderstanding. I've heard some comments that had nothing to do with my letter. So what the letter basically says is with the filtration authority, there's a lot of agreements need to be made on who's going to do what and when's it going to happen, not only before the project, but after the project. And we have been advised by councils that we should have everything in writing. And so what my letters basically says is listed out and writes some agreements. And as far as the memorandum of understanding, you know, if there would be a joint authority and we go together, the memorandum of understanding is probably going to be a fifty or sixty-page document. There's a lot of things that have to be worked out and have to be agreed to and turned over to the new authority. So like I said, there's, there's just too much that needs to be done. And as far as the filtration authority, it's not being done. Thank you.
Anyone else? Four B, Jan's request and speed part during festival free closure.
At its regular meeting on March seventeenth, council requested that the administration look into the request from the arts council to have top art on the street and how that could be addressed with resolution twenty twenty-four nineteen governing the placement of generations, details of those images and phrases on the public street. Community life director Casey Doman and I met with attorney Elizabeth Kramer, the lawyer at Solzmann Hughes, who the city uses for civil rights claims to get guidance from non-council's request. With the request for the installation of signs and murals that are either temporary or permanent, council cannot consider the content of the child in its decision-making. What council must instead focus on is the procedural question, not the aesthetic or value questions that may be used to persuade decision makers. In discussion with attorney Kramer, if the majority of council were agreeable, the request for street art could be approved as part of the overall closure request, provided that the art be removed at the end of the closing period.
What's else?
I would like to move the original request.
Which is better, five?
Yeah, the, the request for the closure of. Why was it?
I think we did it clearly, and that part.
Right, so.
The addition to the one.
Right, just because the recommendation council wasn't going to be or by a third that it would be a combination, that's, so I, I guess what I want to do would be to add the artwork to the, to the original request by the arts.
Well, second.
Question for a second, questions, comments, questions.
Steve, Steve gets it here tonight, and I see a letter that says if you've already contracted to some street artists, which I really like, I think that's, you gotta do that ahead of time. Is there a problem removing it on the last day? Like, did the fire company squirt it off or?
That'd be fine.
So now it'd be okay? Other questions? I'm in. Looking for a call for vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Morsort, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Four C, further, you have a throw from East Warner, put in the levy unable to change by YMCA.
This is an annual request from the Lock Haven YMCA requesting the closure of North Grove Street, essentially the area next to their parking lot on April fifteenth from four to six P M. for their Healthy Kids Day event. I'll work with public works provide barriers, and that usually does have the police there as well as part of that.
Go ahead, motion.
Correct.
Motion for?
A second.
A second. Um, questions? How will we go around the second reading of that closure? Since it's the fifteenth, this is the seventh, ready? We have two, two readings.
Won't be able to in this instance.
Do we get out to, or should we waive that just for this particular thing, or does that set precedence? Sorry, there may get, if people get in a fog, or maybe not know that we do two readings on closures.
Uh, it's a rule made by council. Not a law, so we cannot by resolution. And so your motion can override your motion. Because when you originally set that into place, that was a motion by.
Oh, um, let me make a motion. You did, all right. Are you okay with it being? Then this is a one, I'm. Proble, and Steve, you say.
I think.
They're okay with that as well? All right, so we have a motion for a second, any other question? Call for vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yeah. Councilmember Brandon, yeah. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Morsort, yes. Councilmember Stevenson, yes. Mayor Law.
Yes. Four D, insulation, safety barricades and rope that form an antenna on May thirteenth and fourth.
The Lock Haven Grotta Foundation is requesting to place barricades on the levee for their Grotta happening on May third and fourth. So it's just to keep spectators out of harm's way during that time period, and they have provided insurance for this.
Do I have a motion?
That's a problem. A second.
Motion for a second, any question? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yeah. Councilmember Brandon, yeah. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Morsort, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Four E, use of Memorial Park on May twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
The Bad Adventure Company is requesting the use of Memorial Park on Friday twenty-third, May twenty-third for a low-impact tent camping. I did speak with them about this event. There will be about thirty kayakers arriving via the river, and they will set up just tents. They were told they cannot have any campfire, loud music, and hearing all the other park regulations. This is just a place for them to sleep before they head out the next day early in the morning. If this approved, it would be a revenue from next agenda, so we get to the petty park request that was.
Go ahead, boy.
That's approval.
Second.
Motion for a second, any question? Do we have an access cleared going down the river for them to be removed, or are we gonna have to give the public force for off some of that?
We'll have to check out the area. It is usually somewhat clear, but it's safer for them.
Yeah, because it's, it's pretty grown up at different times. So if they're gonna be pulling their kayaks up in their tents and everything, we should have designated path.
Like, you're pulling out, they own the dam going down there.
And portaging down, just carrying it down.
Well, they have the truck. It was either move them.
So they won't have, yeah.
Don't get it back, you go.
Yeah, so there's still.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, up ahead, there's something there. Other question? Call for vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yeah. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Morsort, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yeah.
Four F, Houston City's Wayne County Woodlands on December twenty-seventh.
Craig Fleming and the P A Trail Dogs are requesting use of Zindel Park on December twenty-seven for a new nighttime winter race. The race will begin at five and be approximately nine miles with a shorter distance for beginners and kids. It'll be similar to other night races held in the area, just none in county that I know of, with an easy route. Racers will be required to have headlamps or some form of light. I know that they usually do provide glow sticks along which has their trail markers as well, so this is a new event, and I do know that the Trail Dogs are interested in working with the city on other things, too, so.
Hmm. What's our job?
I'm with approval. And I, yeah.
Looking for a second, do we have any question, any comments? Call for vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yeah. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Morsort, yes. Councilmember Stevenson. Mayor Law.
Yeah. Do we have any other questions?
I've got none here, I mean.
Unfinished business, five A, consideration award of the L H P self-serve fuel system.
The bids have been certified by the city engineer for the installation of the self-serve fuel, the Piper Airport, and the low bidder is H R I in the amount of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, and this project is covered completely by FAA and BOA agreements.
Do I have a motion?
Okay.
And any question? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Morsort, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes, any question? Sorry, I didn't get it in the floor, but does it have a final one yet for conclusion? I just looked back over because I didn't remember if there was one, but.
It is going in this year. The. The grants will officially be awarded, I believe, in May. So.
I need to see what's in.
Right.
Good, yeah, okay. Five B, award in pension legal services.
The city advertised for pension legal services with the retirement of its current legal council for the pension programs. Two different proposals were received, one from Campbell Durant, the other, Inspector Green. Those were provided to a variety of members of the pension boards of the possible total points available. The most points were acquired by Campbell Durant at two hundred and six points out of two hundred and eighty possible. And so the recommendation is that Campbell Durant be provided the award for pension legal services.
Go ahead, motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion for the second question? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yeah. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Morsort, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yeah. By state notice, determination, the existing C D C O, first of the main great agreement.
This coming in full circle. The existing agreements that you have with C D C O prior to last meeting's adoption of new agreements, this is an official notification that those old ones are made in favor of the new agreement.
Got to go back on them. Five D, consideration importance number twenty twenty-five dash zero four.
It Lock Haven was awarded, as has been reported, rate increased from the Public Utility Commission. Those rates are posted on the city's website, and you can get to them from the homepage of the website right at the very top in red by clicking that link. The Public Utility Commission ports the city its new rate in what are called the jurisdictional areas, and that's everywhere outside the city. City council with the adoption of chapter three ninety-four's amendment will provide that same rate for customers inside the city that the P U C has approved for customers outside the city. A letter went to Assenio Wayne and Allison Township. Allison Township, we have twenty-four customers in, and explained the impact that will have on people's bills, where they will be prorated in the month of May and June and July, the higher rate will be reflected in the bills. That was, that will be the same for city residents with the adoption of this agreement.
What, motion on the audience?
With approval. I will second.
Motion for a second, question, call.
I use a little calculator that Greg sent. I'm going to save fourteen dollars. I don't know. So if anyone else wonders, you can go use that calculator as well, I'll leave that off.
That is not on the website, but it is available if you want to call the water office. They'll be able to tell me that.
Any else? Call for them.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yeah. Councilmember Brinker. Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Morsort, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Five D, consideration resolution of twenty twenty-five dash one two.
This is a resolution accepting the water system transfer agreement, which was signed by the Lock Haven City Authority, and so requires the city's signature as well.
Do I have a motion?
I'm with approval.
Motion for a second, question? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yeah. Councilmember Brandon, yeah. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Morsort, yes. Councilmember Stevenson. Mayor Law.
Yes. Five F, discussion regarding removing from the table ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero four.
Um, before council considers that, I wanted to correct something I said last time. It was not the district chiefs who were to come and advocate for that ordinance. It's the fire advisory board. And in the interim, your last meeting, I did provide some more information to council, but also fire advisory board itself would be the best place to kind of ask the questions and get the answers. They're not here, but if council would be interested, maybe make a subcommittee of people to meet with the fire advisory board to have continued discussion about trying to refine the requested ordinance from the legislature.
When it's been determined on some committee, it's part of the plan. Do we have to remove the ordinance from the table to do that, or can we just let it on?
And just leave it there.
Or if it came off the table, we don't win any of the fans.
Right.
I think that's the way to go with it anyway, not just a couple chiefs, even though they're the district chiefs. The fire department, if you move it off, that's interesting. And it's not, it's going to be a long process, too, so don't expect quick results. So do we need council action to create this subcommittee or?
You can point.
Okay. But Steve is interested, anyone else? Sure. The meanest walk in the air for now.
I love it. It's great time to be.
Is there anyone else? None of these guns now. All right, well, I guess the two of them and all.
As just for reference, did we?
As just for reference, did we read that twenty twenty five oh four of the agenda?
Yeah, probably would.
Yeah, I know that. We don't have that, but.
The chances. Well, we wouldn't be able to take. Twenty twenty four dash. On tables. It wasn't on. Maybe that was a.
Okay. So. That's still on the table, um, any, any unfinished agenda?
I've done your honor.
New business. Consideration of forest management agreement, like capulation forest consultant.
Um, as part of. Transfer of. Assets from. The filtration of, or filtration from the city authority to the city, some agreements need to be amended, this is one of them. Uh, capulation forest consultants, uh, with Mike Wolk as the local representative. Has been. One of the original consultants. With the city authority since twenty thirteen. This would continue that agreement between the city and application for the work that. As part of forest management.
For the money?
An approval.
Motion for a second. It's like, yeah, this is the, uh. The page that's after the map art. It doesn't seem like it's part of that agreement. So what is that, there's no heading, just the nature conservancy. These working woodlands. What? What does that? That's all I'm.
Is that related to the? Nature Conservancy working with the forester? And why we have to have a forester and.
It's not within the agreement for.
You mean these mapped here?
After the one after the.
You have the map, you have two maps and then you have the next up and then you have kind of an explanation of what things are.
Oh, that was a document that was provided as part of the. You. Onboarding with the nature conservancy, it's not actually part of any individual agreement, it's just a improvement sheet.
So it's their worry, you know, I'm worried that, because I, I have. Under the. Conservation easement for, uh, building permanent structures. You know, that, that's not the rule, then, because if we do. Someday maybe get a grant to rebuild the, the care paper house and maybe a pavilion there. That would include us from, from the pavilion, mardi making or trail. So that was something I was worried about there.
That's not the structure, that's not, that's agreement, that's the next one.
That's the next one, so. Where did this go, did it fit into the one previous or the one here? The, this page. That I did.
That goes with the next agreement after that.
So I should wait for that to hit yourself. With, there was no heading, so I didn't learn when. In the grand. And the songs that have been important as. Prior to twenty thirteen.
Five motion for a second, any more question?
I think it's important to say that this agreement's been in place. This isn't, this is nothing new, this is an agreement that's been in place regarding the woodlands and forests and, and that sort of thing, this is not a new agreement in terms of changing. To engage the city, the city.
What I was alluding to.
Yeah. I forgot, we have to make it clear that it's not a new agreement.
How would it change other than the strike?
Yeah.
City.
Yeah.
Okay, so motion for a second, any other question? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yes.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
Six B consideration of the amendments to the agreement. The new for the development, certification, registration, bargaining of greenhouse gas, emission reduction benefits regarding cities working with.
This is, uh, to provide the change in name from the city authority to the city of Lock Haven. Uh, for. The carbon credit sales. Uh, that the city handles with the nature conservancy and the current, uh, kind of. Sales team for that, it's from a company called The New, but the nature conservancy handles all of the different elements that are required. In order to certify the carbon credits so that they can be sold.
You still have a question? Is that, so is that who, uh, handles the carbon credits, the authority, or is that, is that coming back to us?
It's with the city, um, as it said, with the adoption of this agreement. Um. The update is to remove the city authority from the agreement and insert the city of Lock Haven. Into the agreement for carbon credit sales. Um, that's what the actual agreement is for. Your question about prohibited uses. That's something that the city authority entered into. Easements on October third, twenty thirteen. The city authority and the nature conservancy entered into a conservation easement. And those, uh, items that you mentioned like, uh, prohibition against. Placing of any building, recreational board. Asphalt, concrete pavement. Billboards, advertising, um, a variety of things are all listed in that twenty thirteen easement that's on the property.
Okay, back to this graph, the new graph. In the first paragraph, entered into end of twenty twenty five by The New and the City Authority. In other words, Lock Haven, can still say city authority there.
Now.
In that first paragraph.
The final, this is the draft, the final one will come by Doc and Sign with all the directions.
Right, the directions.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and these are two new agreements. That were existing. This other page. From October thirteen, two thousand thirteen, with the conservation easement. Uh. We banned recreational vehicles and. Like for the dirty damage as an example. And then it says et cetera. So that's un, un specifying.
It isn't et cetera. In the actual agreement. The whole section. Uh, section two. So.
Okay, so they just didn't.
Yeah, they didn't include.
There are more, more examples.
The entire easement itself is. Twenty one pages.
Okay, so does it also say about commercial recreation? And I don't consider a, a, uh. Race event or painting event as rec, commercial recreation. So, then, but I do agree with. Dogwood Forest Management, that if we're. Spinning an area or they're doing something there, we certainly can't have them go through where we're cutting trees down. So they might need to remove, move stuff themselves, but I also know. We need to have designated path. But conservation values is pretty wide open as an interpretation. Between their values and our values, or superior. Somebody that hugs trees and you look at it in a totally different way than somebody that looks at economic value and. Just everything else that goes with it and recreation and use of facilities. So I, I just didn't want those, that verbiage. In the Congress, in the conservation easement section to override the good things that we've done in the past and. That it wasn't going to be by council's hands in the future for allowing those type of events on, on the property.
Uh. The easement has been in place since twenty thirteen, so any of the examples that you just used have transpired since twenty thirteen. Uh, so there would be no reason to think differently. Uh, you're not adopting the ease. The easement was already put onto the property in twenty thirteen. So all you're adopting is the change of name for who the carbon credits are. Uh, the responsible party, I guess, which is the city instead of the authority.
Thank you for the discussion.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have a word, but I do. It's rare.
No.
Um. It was considering, we need a motion.
Motion approval.
I'll second.
Motion for a second, any other questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yeah. Councilmember Brandon.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker. Councilmember Conklin. Can you repeat that? Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Any other new business?
I've done your honor.
Yeah, but, but I've done. Anyone have anything else for, for council, like committees or anywhere? About that, how long, even, or?
The library murder mystery, it's maybe again, there's. For Sunday. Monday, just in an attending. I visit on Sunday, Jan. Oh, that's a great question, I think it is, that, that too. It was like one thirty.
Is that the, the doors open at two or is that?
I believe it is.
Okay.
On Sunday?
Saturday, yeah, Saturday is already sold out, so. It's actually happening.
The question, did you receive a letter from downtown adding a, in Georgia, coming final Friday closing?
Oh.
Yeah, because I didn't see that here, but since it was not able to be here. And I, I said I would speak to that.
We'll make that blue sheet, but I might have forgotten to attach it to the email, so I did get that.
Okay. Uh, it was something unique, uh, and they changed some things around our final Friday, Little Street closures. Uh, they're proposing to hold a. Ring and a boxing match. On Main Street, it's part of. The, uh, final Friday closure to draw people in and watch, uh. The, uh, university.
Yes.
Box in front of a decent crowd.
That's street ball.
Not a street ball. In the ring, they have blocks on and their helmets and there's a graphic next to it. So they want to do a talent test.
Oh.
Not me, I'm actually not in it.
Get those big inflatable.
Yeah. It's like, and I don't give us any details, but if, if, if you, the letter is available and she explained that in it, then maybe we'll look next time, but. That's, they already have permission for the street closure, so they're just letting us know that. They're having, they're gonna have something special.
Yeah.
Mm.
I think the, um, the, again, to recognize the dogwood circle group that takes care of Triangle Park. This, it looks beautiful all year round, but the spring is just especially attractive and the park looks really, really.
You said phenomenal.
They do a phenomenal job, they don't always get all the recognition they deserve and they certainly deserve it as. I mean, from the corner in the spring, yeah, it's beautiful. Pretty.
They do receive financial support from. The county community foundation. So if you are ever considering. Way to help sustain their work. That's a good place to, to look into making a donation so that that can continue with their hard work for years to come.
I know, uh, Joanne Vost had gone along on one of the walks with council and she had talked about, um. One of the other things they would be, is those that are willing to be participants. In helping, they have some volunteer organizations, but I know there are lots of people to volunteer to help.
The hometown hero program in downtown is also moving along, they're now accepting applications. For banners for this next two year round cycle. Uh, again, on downtown Lock Haven, it should be on our website too. And, uh, we'll put bloodline up on the bear. We also. We also, uh, I don't know if you've gotten anything on, but there's the university band doing. I saw it twenty one, twenty fourth day. Um, it's, it's seven thirty, I saw frames that may, may. Had to re-pad it then coming, uh, deeper. As well.
Our, our spring pickup, um, is April fourteenth and fifteenth and April twenty first and twenty second, so. You're cleaning up your yard, um, there's more details on that on our website as well, um, as in our newsletter and it'll be on Facebook tomorrow. What was the date? The twenty first, twenty second.
Just a, a thought, um. Dunkin' Donuts. By path there that we have behind there. The, the white line is already gone. As cars driving through, I've noticed a lot of cars are parking right in the middle. Instead of waiting and having that gap, I was there waiting, getting, looking at maybe put a sign there, like stop here. Cause I've seen a bunch of cars parked in there and they, they can't.
In the alley?
No, right there at the turnoff of, uh.
Uh.
Next across McDonald, they can't get in right there because they're. Not waiting in line.
Well, I think they do that because I've been watching that area and. It's like a free for all on a Saturday morning or a busy any morning because. They come in, like some of them will, some of the cars sneak in there instead of going all the way around. To get in that line, they sneak in there. So I think that's part of the problem is.
They're button in line.
They're button in line.
Yeah.
You hear Paul, uh, Horace Wonkin and woo, bad language coming out the window. It's great entertainment.
Is that a lane they put in? Uh, there's the work, looks nice, but people are trying to avoid it.
Yeah.
They try to, yeah, I'll get into it there.
Yeah.
Jump in the line.
Followed us.
No, there's anything we can do about that.
I'll bring it up to. Zoning, because. There, there's some language in. The zoning hearing board and planning commissions review about signage and the like, so. Bring that up to them.
Talking about law following and bad behavior. Do you think that it would be something to maybe put on the website or have the chief address again, the e-bikes on the sidewalks of the city? It has, I mean, I, I walk, I walk every day on Main Street and it never been as there's somebody riding an e-bike. Really fast. On the sidewalks and I think it's dangerous and I don't think they're supposed to be doing, I don't think clarification of that.
Not putting the e-bikes on the sidewalk and.
Hit my car as I was waiting to turn onto the street, um, because they were on the sidewalk and they shouldn't have been. Worked with the pedestrian.
Well, he would, he had run a, in the three or four station. Public service. Very often that, I mean, I get a, I'm coming in. Lights coming in. Lex, I know. If you don't mind, well. I did attend. The district meeting of the Pennsylvania National League. And I wanted to let you know that they gave us, I guess, the. City mayor or the council or whoever. And one of them, well, actually the background one, it is somewhere in the eighteen nineties to, to nineteen hundred. The mayor of Erie and the mayor of Bradford got together and said. Wow, our Pennsylvania legislators and our representatives aren't listening to us and they're not hearing what we're trying to say and fulfill our needs. So they got together, it was fifteen minutes of battles across Pennsylvania, Lock Haven happened to be one of them, of course, it's the same today as it was in nineteen hundred. So P M L's celebrating their one hundred and twenty fifth year. Of, uh. Serving the municipality.
Wow.
And I don't know what you're gonna do with this. But there that is. And they gave us a. Nice. In the sound of blocks. I did hand out once. The knock, no. But you have these, it's only a block. If you want it back, I'll hang it up. Yeah. So this is a very nice plaque and it's heavy. Uh, I don't, I don't know how to sit it on the stand, but I'm not gonna. If you want to, look at that somewhere, there might be another piece.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Wait, okay. Be careful, all right. And we do have a sticker that maybe you can put it on our doors, offender, out front. And they also gave us a, uh. Another, to do, um. A nice little. Little city of Lock Haven. So there, yeah, so there you go.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you for starting us on the ears and meaning. Thanks, Steve. Thank you for starting us on all ears in municipally. There, we've been a real value in that in that organization for the city.
Appreciate it, thank you. I didn't care of this law too, you know. I'm afraid of.
Anyone else have any, or council? But what do you adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
All right, thanks everyone.